Good evening and welcome. Today is Monday, December 16th, 2019. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, we have just come from executive session and we have not adjourned. We will be returning after this meeting to continue discussing a legal matter. We're going to start with comments from the Board. Teres, would you like to start?
Sure. So I have a couple of comments today. First of all, I think that I know all the concerts have not been done yet, but the ones that have have been well-attended. The kids have done a fantastic job performing, and I give everybody a lot of credit, especially the teachers who pull together these events because it's a huge effort. It's amazing how many kids are involved, and I love that it's always a packed house and such a positive energy. It's just great for the holidays. Wait a minute, okay. So I'm also the Coddle liaison this year and have been working with Mr. Cook Allen and Mr. Marash and attended their principal's coffee, I think that was like a few weeks ago now. They did a great job. They have a lot going on. There was about 10 people who were there in the morning, and I think about the same at night. They have a lot of plans for Coddle, and they're really trying to involve the teachers, the kids, and bring new programs to the school, which is awesome. I was really impressed with their Orange Bandana Project. And if anybody doesn't know about it, you should look into it because it's a wonderful way of recognizing people who are doing good and bringing some positivity to a community. I am aware about the petition that's been going around about seven Board members. I think it's really an interesting concept because over the summer, when Laura and I first joined, we have to go to like governance committees or workshop, whatever the thing's called, it's all day. And it's as boring as it sounds. No, it's actually interesting, but it's a very long day and a lot of information. And that's one thing that always comes up is they talk about different numbers of boards. We were able to sit with other people who have different sized boards and the pluses and minuses, and it's something that we discussed this summer. So when I saw there was a lot of interest and people wanted to have the conversation, I wanted to do a little bit of research myself, and I looked back at the last 11 years of elections, of which six elections, had we had a seven-person board, six elections, we would not have been able to fill the seats with our candidates. Three elections, there would have been no vote, and any candidate would have walked on. And then two elections, one in, actually both elections, one person, one candidate would have been voted off. So I think that a way for people to kind of feel involved and for us to have more of a voice from the community, because I think our community has a lot to offer, and everybody has a different skill set, would be to enhance our Board committees, forming different committees for things like athletics or health and wellness, social-emotional learning, where we can all bring our talents in and maybe not have the full commitment of a Board and maintain the sense of democracy in election and that kind of thing. But I think it's a good conversation starter, and we should look into it more. We're planning a retreat in the beginning of January to kind of revisit this and to look at what committees we're really going to focus on and then how we're going to recruit for it. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Pete?
Yeah, I have a few comments. I don't normally use comment period, but I do have a few tonight, so I apologize if I'm a little lengthy. First thing I wanted to say was I know that there's a lot of concern out there in the community about all the changes at our leadership level. Obviously, we have a new interim superintendent sitting here tonight. That was probably not expected by most. It's kind of a abrupt change. And we do have a couple of interim positions that still haven't been filled, and we've had some movement. So I know that's a concern to some people, and I understand that, but I just want, from my perspective as a Board member, I just wanted to say a few comments about that. One is that I'm actually extremely excited and optimistic about where we are right now. I know that may seem sort of counterintuitive based on what I just said, but I think we are sitting in a really good spot right now. We have a lot of opportunity. We have a very ambitious strategic plan ahead of us that I think is outstanding. But if you look at that plan, it's a four-part plan. One thing that runs throughout it is that it really talks about bold vision and about looking at education differently for the whole student. That's going to take some real different types of leadership and a positive sort of viewpoint. And I think, you know, being able to go out and find a new permanent superintendent, fill those vacancies in line with that plan is just a good opportunity. I'm also really bullish about where we are right now because I think you guys have an outstanding Board of Education in front of you. I really mean that sincerely. This is a fantastic Board. I can't tell you how privileged I am to work with these ladies. They're all professional. They show up prepared every time. They're committed. There's no alternative agendas. It's all business. And what's really exciting to me about it is that we're unified. We're coherent on the big issues. Doesn't mean that we don't disagree on small items or that we don't have different perspectives. That's important on a Board as well. But I've learned that on the big-ticket items, the real visionary items, it's important that you have unity, and we have that. We have coherence, and it's really good. We believe all of us collectively that we have a great district, a really good district, but it can be better. It should be better. It hasn't reached its potential, and we all believe that, and we believe that sincerely. We believe there needs to be more accountability in some areas. We know we have a fantastic staff up and down, but in some areas, maybe more accountability needs. So we're on the same page when it comes to those issues, and that's why I'm excited about that. Now, you know, for us to be good and us to be effective, we need to have community support and trust. And I think for the most part, we do. I think for the majority of the community, I feel like we do. Of course, this is my own perspective here, my own opinion. But in the recent weeks, there's been, I think, a pretty clear effort to smear the reputations and the character of some of the people on this Board, and this Board in general. And I just don't think that's productive. It's very disturbing to me. I don't have a problem with people having different opinions or not agreeing with things that we've done, but I do have a problem with the personal attacks. There's no place for it. There's no reason for it. And I believe it's a small, small minority. I believe it's a couple of people that are behind this effort. I believe those individuals have personal axes to grind. Maybe things coming out of this Board didn't go their way, and they're just sort of bitter about it. You know, look, you know, this is a democratic process. You don't always get your way, but you have to work within that process. You don't attack the process. You don't attack the people on it unjustly. I believe this is pre-evident through, you know, recent Board meetings. We've had individuals take this podium and misuse it and use it to make personal attacks, I believe. I believe, this is my personal belief, but I believe those issues are not really issues. They're a vehicle to make personal attacks against people on this Board. And I say that because these individuals come here, they haven't been here before, and all of a sudden, they're bringing up five issues at a time, issues that are not timely, the things we've already dealt with in the past, and they're weaving in personal information in there, and they're not listening to our answers. It's very clear that we answer the question, they just move on to the next thing. And then I know what's going on in the street. I know there are people out in the social circles of this neighborhood that are saying derogatory things about people on this Board that aren't true, that are about their character, and it just needs to stop. It really does. It's disgusting. So what I really want to say to the community and to those who are listening is that I can't control the actions of those people, obviously, but I want to plead to you to do two things. One is when you're hearing this stuff and you're faced with it, I want you to ask an important question, which is why. You know, there's always the who, what, when, where. Why is always the most important question you can ask. And it's sometimes the harder question because it's usually not the why on the surface. You've got to dig a little deeper. And I think when you're getting this stuff spewed at you, if you ask yourself why, you'll find that those individuals have a personal axe to grind. Something didn't go their way, and they're angry about it. They're bitter about it. Secondly, I want you to get your own facts. I don't want you to listen to rumor mill. I want you to get your own information directly. These meetings are on YouTube. The minutes are available. We have all sorts of ways you can communicate. We have Board Office Hours. If you think one of our characters is questionable, or you have a problem with our integrity, come talk to us. Come meet with us. I guarantee you, within two, three minutes, you'll see that you've been misled. So I just want you people to get, you know, for people to get their own information, pay attention, and consider the source when you're getting this derogatory information. So that's all I have to say about that. I did have one other thing I wanted to read. So in all of this, there was a lot of talk about the IMA, which was with regards to the street deal, and two things that were particularly attacked was the term of the agreement, whether or not it was lawful, and also the issue of Michelle Licio having a conflict of interest. So I have two statements prepared by our lawyers that I wanted to read in response to both of those issues. The intermunicipal agreement with the town of Eastchester that included a transfer of ownership to the school district of a portion of Cywinno Boulevard was negotiated and drafted by and between the attorney for the school district and the town attorney and was unanimously approved by the then Board of Education in December 2018. Both the school district's council and the town's council indicated that the agreement that was drafted as drafted was appropriate for each party to consider and approve. Second statement is prior to the then Board of Education's unanimous approval of the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Eastchester that included a transfer of ownership to the school district of a portion of Cywinno Boulevard, the attorneys for the school district determined that although Michelle Licio was and is employed by the town of Eastchester, she did not have a conflict of interest with respect to the agreement under the law or school district policies. There remains determination of the attorneys for the school district today. I can also say that that same determination was made by the town attorneys as well. So I know I was very long with it. I apologize. That's all I have.
Thank you, Pete, for your comments. Cynthia?
Well, a lot of what they said was some of the things I was going to say. So I'm going to just wish everyone a wonderful holiday and Happy New Year. I, as Pete said, am excited about the year to come and looking forward to working together and making this a really great place, you know, for this community and for all the students.
Laura?
Thanks. So I'd just like to do a little recap, just an update, which I'll do every meeting, about the superintendent search. Peter and I are heading that, and I'll speak to that tonight. So just a little recap of what has happened in that. We had Dr. Coles here from Bosse's. Those of you that did come out on Friday, I know it wasn't an ideal date. We had to change it, and that was the only day. So that was unfortunate that it had to be a Friday in December, but there were roughly about 18 to 20 people that came, and we appreciate those that came out. He reported back that it went very well. He felt it was a very constructive conversation. He had a lot of positive things to say about the community. And also, just along the line of the attendance, he is recommending we're going to do another forum in January, so January 9th at 6:30. That's a Thursday, and that will be sent out to everybody. If you notice, if you go on the website, under Board of Ed, there's a superintendent search tab there. So if anybody's ever interested in finding information, we will be posting on that. Anything that I say or Pete says or anything that has any relevance to superintendent search, we'll post it right on there. So if you missed the meeting or you weren't in attendance, you'll get an update. We also had a survey that went out. We had about 155 that responded to that to date. We initially were going to end the survey, but we're going to continue it, so the survey is still there. It's still available for people to get on there and respond. There's a box that you can type in as well as answer questions. And then the other thing that we're working on, or that Dr. Coles is working on, is that he's putting together a flyer, and then the flyer basically will meet with him next Wednesday, and the flyer will go out after that. The flyer is basically the position, and the reason why we have surveys and forums is to get a sense of what does this community want, not necessarily what the district wants. He spent also a day, I forgot, he spent a day with the school, so he was here all day, and he met with all stakeholders within the building, and he said that was very well-attended. Again, he had great feedback for us on that. So just so that you know, once the flyer is done, it's going to go out to both local as well as state as well as national sites that superintendent search on. So for example, the application or the flyer, so to speak, will go to 740 superintendents in the state. And then there's Education Week that is a national forum that people go on. There's OLS. There's also counterparts that are Bosse's in other states. So it's a very comprehensive position that's, you know, that's put out there. So that's basically an update. Again, I hope those that met Dr. Coles, I know he's from Bosse's, and I know there were some concerns there that we didn't hire a private company, but you know, he's gotten some good feedback. I've gotten good feedback from those that have interacted with him. And again, he will be here January 9th, again, at 6:30. He'll probably be held in the library, and so I hope as many people that can come out do, and that's my.
Thank you.
Laura, how can people access the survey?
It'll be on our, if you go onto the Board of Ed and then you link into that superintendent search, the survey will be there. It's actually, it may not be there. He's putting it back up, so if it's not there, you don't see it tonight, by tomorrow, you'll see it there.
Yeah, good. I think that personally, I think that's a great opportunity for people because everybody's schedule is very busy and dates can be hard to swing, but essentially, the survey can be like going to a forum and having your voice heard, expressing what you think is important and where our priorities need to be in the search. So please, fill out the survey. Come to the forum.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of comments also this evening. First, I wanted to welcome Ms. Goodman. I think we are very, very lucky to have her over the last, it's barely been two weeks or 10 days even, and the feedback that we've received has been very positive. She's working very, very hard for your kids, the students of this district, working hand in hand with our staff, and we're excited to have her here, and we ask for your support. And really, anyone who has reached out to Ms. Goodman to date has seen that she has an open-door policy, and anyone who has not had an opportunity to meet her, to go to the coffee, please call Lauren, make an appointment. She will make herself available. Pete also did state earlier that we still this year do have our Board Office Hours, and they are open to anyone in the community who would like to meet with the Board prior to our monthly meetings. And all you have to do is call in, make an appointment with Lauren, let us know who will be coming and the topic you'd like to discuss, and the Board is open for that as well. So we just wanted to make sure that the community knows that it is an open door, and we welcome you, and we welcome meeting you. I also did want to add that, Teres mentioned it, that the Board will be meeting on Saturday, January 4th, for our mid-year retreat. We do have lots of work to do. Teres mentioned regrouping on our committees. We have a lot of policy work that we'd like to do. We have to go back and relook at our goals, so we are going to be here on Saturday, January 4th, working on that with Ms. Goodman. I also do want to read a brief statement. Pete read a statement, and I'd also like to read a statement, and this is in regards to the New York State Controller's Office. As many of you may or may not know, the State Controller's Office completed a risk assessment of the district in early November of this year. A risk assessment is review and evaluation of financial policies and procedures as well as internal controls and usually precedes an audit by the State Controller. However, in late November, representatives from the State Controller's Office reached out to the district's attorneys to inform them that based upon the risk assessment, they would not anticipate conducting an audit of the district. Our understanding is the district will be receiving written confirmation of that in the very near future. So I just wanted to put that out there. I do know that the staff was aware that the state wasn't here, and I just wanted everyone to know that we had a really a clean report back from the state, so we will be getting that in writing shortly. I did also want to, this is the last public meeting of the school year. The last few months have gone very quickly. I want to wish all of our school community a joyous holiday season. It is really a time to enjoy our friends, our families, and really take a moment to appreciate all that we do have, so please enjoy. And you're on, Ms. Goodman.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I want to have my superintendent's report to really be about the mission of the Takahoe Union Preschool District, which is to prepare every student for excellence. I have a couple of comments to make that are not as related to that, but very timely. First of all, tonight, many of you, or this afternoon, received a Blackboard Connect message from me, and I just wanted to explain what happened. I sent this message late afternoon after I heard what happened at Coddle School today. At approximately 2:00 PM today, a driver entered the district-owned portion of Cywinnoy Boulevard, and he was going fast, and no students or pedestrians were outside at the time, so thank goodness, no one was injured. While our district does maintain a barrier system on that portion of the road, there will be an immediate investigation by the school district about how any lapses in overseeing that happened. And also, I will have an immediate meeting already planned for tomorrow at 1 o'clock with school district administrators, security consultants, and local police to promptly address this matter. In the short term, we are conducting an investigation and have decided that no students will be playing on that portion of the road until a longer-term solution can be reached. I want to personally thank the Eastchester Police Department for their prompt response as well as Coddle Administration and security teams, again, for quick response. Please know that student safety is paramount. Please feel free to contact me or Building Administration with any questions. Another piece that I want to talk about today is the public participation at Board meetings. It is the responsibility of the Board of Education and the school district leadership to maintain the tone and civility of Board of Education meetings for the benefits of our students as well as for the well-being of our community. In our leadership positions, it is our duty to guide the district, and when necessary, we focus on our primary goal of educating students. With that said, in our roles, it is understood that there will be areas of our work that members of the community may disagree with. While your participation is appreciated and we value your input, the public comments section of our meetings is not a time for public discussion. Having worked at many school districts and also gone to many town meetings, that is the way school meetings are conducted throughout Westchester. We would like to remind all community members that the members of the Board of Education make themselves available for discussion at office hour sessions prior to every business meeting as well as via email to our district email addresses posted on our website. Likewise, for me, as the interim superintendent, I am also available for meetings, phone calls, and emails. I welcome meeting with anybody who is upset about anything and trying to come up with solutions that work for the entire school district as far as excellence for all students. With this in mind going forward, we will be adhering to Board Policy 1230 regarding public participation at Board meetings, excerpts of which can be found on the back of the printed agendas and are available this evening on Board Docs. That includes a three-minute limitation for public speakers. Construction update. Progress on the new Coddle wing this past week includes ceiling grids and tiles are being completed in classrooms who are 75% complete. Sheikrock is being completed and taped and sanded in preparation of the painting. Also, some classrooms have already been painted. All baseboard is completed. We've completed insulating in the classrooms. And opening, all the openings are closed, and we're awaiting the glass for the windows. Concrete sidewalk is partially complete by the security vestibule. We are awaiting ConEd for scheduled connection of primary new electric power. For the middle school, high school vestibule, we're waiting for the partitions because they have not shipped yet. I'm thinking, what I'm hearing is like an early to mid-March opening, but those of you who are in construction need to bear with us because if you've ever been involved in the project, anything can happen. I think mostly anything that can happen, happened, but we still need to be aware of that. My other part of the presentation is really about every student for excellence. And first, I want to start with the faculty and staff, and I really do sincerely want to thank them. I have been around. I know a lot of them. I've had a great learning curve having been here, and I've seen the excellence of their teaching, and I really do appreciate it. They do a lot for your students. They really do go the extra 10 yards, and I'm so appreciative, and it's wonderful to work here. Districts with higher levels of student achievement show clear alignment between the Board, the district, and the school efforts in support of non-negotiable goals, which is what the Board is working on. Our top priority is teamwork and advocacy for high achievement and healthy development of all students in the district. That goes along with your mission. Providing educational leadership for the district, including my work with the Board of Education on the implementation of this vision and the Board of Education's strategic plan with the Board, and collaborating with the stakeholders, who are the principals, the teachers, the other staff, the parents, and the community. And that's why we want to look at forming other committees where you can hear, where we can have your voices. Strong linkages with our community is very important to us, as well as linkages between schools and linkages between related service providers and our staff, and also linkages to other agencies that are available in the Westchester community. We need to start bringing in resources. It's hard to be a student today, and a lot of students need social and emotional support. Setting and reviewing district policies with the Board tied to our goals, tied directly to our vision and long-range planning for education. Of course, creating the annual school budget is a very important piece of what the Board is doing and what I will be doing with them, and really hearing from all our stakeholders about the needs and prioritizing them because of the cap. Ensuring safety and adequacy of all school facilities. You know that we have a capital project, and even what happened today, as a school, sometimes we have to step back and we have to make decisions. And I think the decision today to bring together all the people who can help us ensure the safety of that road and what we're going to do going forward is very important. Providing resources for professional development. I know in my role, I've started doing that, but finding out what teachers, principals, and other staff need, and working with our staff, our students, our families, and our community for student excellence for all. This is a small district. This can happen here. We are already doing great stuff, but we need to be forward-thinking. I want to just talk a little bit about what's happening in some schools. I don't want my report to be all about construction. I'm just not a construction-type of person. I really want it to be about education. So at Coddle School, which I'm very proud of, the work that they've been doing across so many different areas, and one of them is iReady, which they just brought in this year, and the teachers have really jumped on board to look at this. And for those of you who don't know, this is an assessment and a program that looks at reading and math to address students' individual needs. It empowers teachers to make decisions, inform decisions about student instruction, and it monitors student growth. So we're really doing data-based instruction, and we know how important that is at the elementary school. And I do have an interesting other piece that I would love to add to the elementary school. I'll just throw it out there. It is, it'll be a budget issue, but we really want to look at foundation. So we really give kids early reading based on Wilson Principles, benemic awareness, and finest instruction, and that will be just like a huge, huge change for our district. And it's something that's needed, and it's already been discussed with the teachers, and they're really excited about it. The middle school, high school had a wonderful book fair. I want to, when I see what the PTA does here, I am just like really blown away, and that was just one of the many things that they assisted with, and it was a huge project. And the kids were so excited, looking at all these great books. It wasn't a scholistic, scholastic book fair. It wasn't your typical. It had great books that kids want to read, and with all different genres. And I really do thank the PTA for putting that together. I also want to thank our school librarian and her staff. It was Ms. Johnson and Ms. D'Angelo. Next, I want to talk about music in our schools, and you will see a presentation tonight on that. We offer a comprehensive music program in the school. I want to first talk about the elementary band orchestra and chorus production that I was so fortunate to see. The concerts I watched really were so amazing. At Coddle, Ms. Chentoff and 46 students put on a flawless orchestra concert. The same was true of the chorus with Ms. Kim, and that was another 120 students. The night ended with Mr. Grasso's 84 band students. This Wednesday night, the middle school performance of the winter concert, I hope you're all coming, for band and chorus, and Thursday, the same at the high school. Now, the strings concert really was amazing. It was outstanding for those of you who came. I don't know, did anybody see that? Okay, good. I like to see those shaking heads. I have worked in large and small school districts. My kids attend school, and I truly have never heard anything that... My kids attend school, and I truly have never heard anything that moving, really. I just thank Mr. Duchateau. You'll be hearing from him later tonight, and you'll see what I mean. I just want to give you a quick importance of music, which I gave to the parents that night. Music training helps in reading and language. It improves students' work. It increases coordination. It helps kids engage in school. It brings success in society. Students who have musical education are much less likely to abuse substances over a lifetime, and it contributes to their intellectual development and their emotional development. They learn pattern recognition, and for those moms and dads out there who are thinking about college, they also have been shown to increase SAT scores. There's been studies on that. They fine-tune the auditory skills, which we know a lot of our kids really need fine-tuning in. It can be socially, emotionally relaxing. It teaches discipline and grit. It's great for the creative economy today. Economy, they're looking at creativity. This next generation that is going to be going into the workforce, they really want people who can think creatively, who have spatial intelligence, who have teamwork, all part of music, risk-taking, and confidence. So, in a little bit, you'll be hearing from Mr. Duchateau and his group. We also have a sports education presentation tonight, where Mr. Tobin will be talking about what we're doing for our fall sports agenda. And again, sports again. I want you to think extracurricular, co-curricular, and academic. And we know that sports also develops discipline, the determination to win, how to win together, collaborate, willpower, the power of mental development involved in sports, and it also is a vocational specialization for some students who will go on, because there's so many different levels of sports that you can do in terms of your future life. But there's also so wonderful extracurricular activity that develops your body and your mind. And what we're doing with these extra and co-activities is to build self-confidence in our students. As you see on the agenda, we have a chess club that we're going to be putting into place, and it helps students improve the virtue of their teamwork, to be parts of a sports team, or sports, parts of a music team, or be involved in a club. It connects students to school. It makes them more involved in activities, and they do better. It brings them together in teamwork. I said that. And it also develops talent. Our students who are good in sports, students who are good in music, and students who are good in arts, or academics, or all of those. We see that they all go together. And nowadays, that we know how stressful it is for students in school, how competitive it is to get to college, how kids start thinking about this in elementary school. We want our kids just to feel good about themselves and to feel successful. We want to take a step back and find them, to have them find where they belong. So, all of this in our school, extracurriculars and co-curriculars, and our wonderful teachers all work together to make a well-rounded student. And that's my report tonight, and you will be seeing the presentations coming up.
Okay. We move on to, please, do you have any comments tonight?
No, I just would, well, briefly, just to echo what Ms. Goodman said, that we're moving along steadily with our construction project. We've also completed the installation of a brand-new boiler in this building, so we're continuing to work to make sure that the infrastructure in this building keeps up with the modern world and keeps our students happy and healthy. So, we're working that way. Thank you.
Comments from the PTA?
Good evening. I'm Tara Zeggers, President of the Tuckahoe PTA. I want to begin by thanking Ms. Johnson and the library staff for collaborating with the PTA on an amazing book fair this past week at the Tuckahoe Middle High School. And to announce that registration for the Tuckahoe PTA's Curious on Hudson's Winter Session of its STEAM enrichment programs is open as of today at noon. We do have some space limitations that continue down at Cottle, so it is first-come, first-served. That information should be available on tuckahoepta.com, and there were some school announcements that went out. I also want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Carl Albano on behalf of the Tuckahoe PTA for his 17 years of service to this district. The PTA and Mr. Albano always had a partnership when it came to events that we were planning. He provided us with support at every turn without fail. Personally, in my capacity now as president, but in the past as the Chair of the SEPTA and as Vice President, I worked with Mr. Albano on many, many projects, and I always appreciated his true open-door policy, his collaborative dialogue, his professionalism, and the fact that he was present for so much of what the PTA did through the years. We wish him the very best in his future endeavors. Ms. Goodman, welcome to your new role. I and the Executive Board look forward to working with you this year. The PTA is here to support you in your new position, and we look forward to seeing what the future brings. With regard to the future, I would like to make some comments that reflect the substantial feedback I have heard from PTA members over these past weeks. The PTA as an organization is largely made up of a membership of parents, teachers, and administrators. Our mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. With this mission in mind, and with our school community at a pivotal point in its history, we do have some concerns. First, going forward, we urge there to be open, honest, and transparent community engagement in the decisions that are being made. Constructive, respectful dialogues about substantive issues are best served by an open exchange of information, with opportunity for that information to be reviewed and discussed. We know it is impossible for a district of any size to take into account the opinions of every single person who may express them. But, offering more opportunities to discuss those points of view, and just as importantly, offering information that might change those points of view builds a foundation for acceptance of the decisions that are made. It makes for a stronger community. As such, the PTA is asking that the Board and Ms. Goodman in your interim role keep this in mind as we move through the rest of this year. Second, there is a very real concern about the stability of this district. There can be no disputing that there have been very high turnover rates in the district, not just at the leadership levels, but throughout the school buildings. Apart from the superintendent search, which must be a priority, there are concerns about what is happening at other levels. For example, thus far, there have been no announcements about the plans for a new Director of Special Education, or who, if anyone, has assumed those duties since December 2nd. We also know that our teachers are working without a contract. We know that our support personnel are working without a contract. All of these issues create an environment of uncertainty. It makes it difficult to advance long-term initiatives like the strategic plan. It makes it hard for the educators who work so hard in the classrooms every day to feel that they are valued for the work that they do. All of these factors impact our children, and at the end of the day, that is why we're all here. The PTA is asking for you to provide a real plan for how the Board intends to change this trend, and to discuss that publicly, if not right now, in the very near future. As always, we are here to assist you in any efforts you may wish to advance that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Okay, Tuckahoe School Foundation. Does anyone here from the School Foundation? Nope? Okay. All right. We are going to move on to the first recognition of the audience, and this is on Agenda Items.
Excuse me, I'm a little bit cold. Is the Agenda Items also in reference to your public comments at the beginning of this meeting?
I'm sorry, can you give us your name?
My name is Nathan Jackman. I'm a resident of Tuckahoe. I just want to refer to some of the comments made by the members, one of which was that concerns related to this board, which I understand were quite heated over the past couple of meetings that I watched, and, you know, to my opinion, unnecessarily so. However, I think it's unfair to characterize those comments as an axe to grind or a very small group of people. I can tell you from, you know, my group of folks here in town, that there's some general concerns, there's feelings of instability, as was referenced. And I have to say, in commentary to the letter that you've read regarding the agreement, we understand that, I think, some people that have been discussing this are concerned that there's a difference between a legal requirement and an ethical requirement. And, for example, I'm a member of the Tuckahoe Zoning Board. If my neighbor comes up in front of the zoning board, who's my good friend, I'm actually not required to recuse myself from his case. However, ethically, I do so anyway, because even if you have nothing going on, the problem is that then you created this issue where, you know, you're going down this rabbit hole of people coming after you personally, versus cutting that off right at the bud. You know, I have a link to this, I'm done, the vote would have been 4-0, and we would have moved on with life. Now, that's water under the bridge. What I hope we take from this is that for the future, for all members, that they keep this in mind, as far as what is a legal requirement for accusing yourself from decisions made for the school district versus an ethical requirement that might cause questions from members of the community. Also, in reference to, again, as Tara very nicely said, I wish I had things written because they'd be a little smoother, but, you know, there's a feeling of uncertainty and instability right now. And what doesn't help that is, you know, given how heated the last two meetings got, and I understand you kind of probably had to do this for your purposes. But you come in, and the first thing is you're limiting public comments to three minutes, and people have to sign up. It doesn't feel open. It doesn't feel honest. It doesn't feel contributory, and it's difficult to give honest feedback when you feel that either the Board is scared of the public's comments, which understandably, again, it's been very heated. However, I think there is valid commentary about what's going on right now, given the feelings in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. All right. We are now going to move on to our presentation, our strings presentation.
Just let me introduce Charles Duchateau, our strings teacher. And again, I think when you listen, again, as I said, it brought tears to my eyes, it's quite moving, and I thank you for your work.
So, I'll just make a quick comment about what you're about to see. I'll apologize that it's not a holiday concert, but we can thank Dr. Linehan for this. Dr. Linehan, at the end of last year, offered to send me and a few of our other teachers, Ms. Coleman, Mrs. Moser, Ms. Kakese, and Mrs. Johnson, to a program at the Jacob Burns Film Center called Image, Sound, and Story, as part of the district's Visual Literacy Initiative. So, I know all the various teachers have been incorporating this into their curriculum in different ways. So, what the strings did is we actually did a concert of all movie music, kind of trying to connect what happens in music and visual things and put all these things together. So, this is a five-minute little greatest hits of our concert from Tuesday night.
Should we turn off the lights?[1387.02]
Raise your hopeful voice, you have a choice, you've made it well. Falling softly, sing a melody, I'll sing it well.
If you'll allow me, I'll, I'll say a quick, quick thing, and actually, if you've been to my concerts, you know that I have a tendency to ramble unintelligibly. My wife always tells me to write things down, so I did. So if you can't tell from the video, I really do enjoy my job. And I know my fellow teacher, teaching sisters and brothers, would agree with this. I mean, we get to work with our community's greatest asset, our children. And I'm one to stay away from politics, but I, you know, I mean, I do think, I haven't even thought about it because I've been busy with that, and we just kind of keep going. And I think that's, I, I know just from all the other teachers, what I hear, that's what we've been doing through, through, you know, what does feel like a bit of a rocky time. I'm, I happen to be not only a teacher, but I am a community member. When I moved here 20 years ago, I didn't expect that I would end up teaching here. My wife and I are both professional musicians. We've been very thankful to raise our two boys in this district, and I now have a freshman and a senior. We've been even more grateful to watch the arts program here flourish and grow. We can proudly say our graduating senior this year was actually the first boy in Ms. Kaia Kim's choir when Mr. Albano Senior brought her in. And those kids who are all now graduating seniors, I think Ms. Fernandez would agree with me, are the backbone of the choir now. And our younger son is the product of this newly added string program, also by Mr. Albano Senior, run by Ms. Shentoff. You know, and in a district of this size, I think normally you would be thinking about, hearing about a shrinking arts program. So we've been very thankful, and I would just like to thank, you know, all the administrators, board members, and teachers who have been involved to create and add what is a great and thriving arts program in this little district. And I would just say, I look forward to continuing to grow my string program and consider myself very fortunate to be a small but valued part of this wonderful school district. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. That was wonderful, and thank you so much for sharing that with us. We're going to now move on to athletics review. Mr. Tobin is here to give us a presentation on what's happening in athletics.
First of all, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to come forward and speak between the board and the community. Following a little bit of the music, I want to start off a little bit different to thank the band with athletics. Mr. Grophy and the band, I have to tell you, the spirit, the pride, and to see those kids on cold, cold nights in Middletown, instruments freezing in there for us, and our tiger is just, it's, it's an unbelievable feeling for myself, the athletes, the coaches, and I'm sure the community. So I wanted to start by, by thanking him and all work together. And I'd like to borrow your suit next time I present. It's been a truly amazing experience, and we have 13 teams in five sports this fall. Tocco. What I ask the coaches to do is, besides what they do for each of our children every day, is get their uniform back, but really write me a little blurb from their own words about each of their teams, because like a teacher, they're the one that's out there with them every day on the field, on behind the scenes. And I'll kick it off with varsity soccer. Our 2019 season from Coach Simone and Coach Sweeney was completed with a six, seven, and three record, going into overtime, four games, and having 10 of our games decided by one goal. That could very easily have been a different story with the wins, losses, and ties. We finished the season ranked second in Class C, very strong finish with our games going down to the wire many times, as I had stated. The boys showed heart each time they stepped onto the field, and we as coaches cannot be more proud of them and the way they played. That's from our soccer, and I'll give the accolades a little bit later on with all league and all section, et cetera. Volleyball, girls volleyball, fantastic season from the coach. Each player was fully committed to improving their skills, and they were dedicated to the team. They also enjoyed spending time off the court with their team bonding, bonding activities, which finished up with a 13 and five record. Really strong season. We have 13 of our 16 players coming back next year, so we look forward to a really good year with volleyball. And they lost to Keough in the playoffs here at home. Another very, very good outstanding game. JV boys soccer, the boys competed, and one of the best things that Coach I and Eddie shared was that they arose to the, to this season, for every occasion, the determinations and their persistency of the team was noted. Regardless of the score or the skill of their opponents, they always persevered and never gave up. It goes to show the spirit that they possess, as well as their strength and endurance. Just go out there and keep it going every day. Girls varsity soccer in 2019 was a young team. The team secured a playoff spot and went to fourth seed in Section One, Class C girls' soccer playoffs. The hard work this team put together all year truly showed in their playoff game, where the team took the number one seed in the playoffs into a four-overtime game against LaFell. It was outstanding. And I got to tell you, to be there every day, I have to say, and be a part of this as, as the administrator, it is just a joy. And you know, I try to tweet a lot and get the pictures out to you as parents and share with you. It, it, it's really a great feeling to see the kids and, and participate and do the job that they do. Varsity football, nine and two, great season. You know, they, they really, the Tocco varsity football team had, had a great 2019 season, leading them all the way to the state semifinals, facing off with Mariah High School at Middletown High School, and losing. Mariah eventually went to the state final, we were one game away from going to Syracuse. The team worked hard all through the season. They beat Haldane for the Section One title, Class D Section One title. We, we were putting that ball up in the main lobby, and they beat Waterville in the state quarterfinals, and also a very, very good game. Out of our 13 teams in five sports, we also have modified football, modified girls and boys soccer, JV volleyball, JV soccer, and two modified volleyball teams. Again, we appreciate it all everyone did. Two other sports that I want to mention before I get to the special awards, tennis. We had eight young ladies participate in tennis. Bella Touche was a semifinalist in the sections, and she made all league and all section. Also swimming. We had three young ladies participate with swimming in Bronxville, and Emily Gajerson placed third overall in the States and fourth in the 500 with a four-minute, .51-second time. Ms. Goodman mentioned the academia of Tocco. I have to tell you, I was a principal for 24 years and never had a kid go to Duke on a full athletic scholarship. I want to congratulate Emily and her family, very humbled about it, but she's going to represent Tocco at Duke. And we had the signing here in November, and an outstanding young lady, and her sister also swims, and hers coming up behind her. And, and I think we have a lot to look forward to with, with that program. I did mention tennis again, and thank those young ladies for their support. Our Pioneer League, our, our students work very hard in the Pioneer League. We have 10 students in that league that's been a number of years in existence. We, we're playing at 4:15 at, in Ardsley, and soccer's our next event. But those 10 students have worked very hard with Coach Diarco and also are outstanding, and to go watch them every day and get to see them compete. So we're playing again on Wednesday. And, and again, I've been putting a lot of those games up on, on Twitter as well. I want to finish off with the special awards. Varsity girls soccer, all league, Angelina Lisetta, Sophia Kalasko, Gianna Gildard, Ella Bordwell, Megan Lynn, Ava Casaza, Isabel Corsieri, and Juliette Corsieri. Varsity football, all league, Justin Lee, Jonathan Berger, Drazen Pavoric, Michael Myers, Evan Rivera, Rob Cypher, Jack Gentry, all conference, again, Drazen, and Mike Myers. All section, Justin Lee, Jonathan Berger, by all the way, by the way, who was also committed to MIT. So we're going to have that signing down the road as well. Congratulations to Jonathan and his family. Jonathan is also a 2019 Westchester All-Star, and, and second team is, again, Justin Lee is on him with the second team on that. Jonathan is also up for the upcoming Golden Dozen Award, which is very, very prestigious. So that's a lot to look forward to. Varsity volleyball, Lily Tyler, all league, Grace Mullin, Melissa Dean, Emma Davis, Chater Rosas, Marina Spearbeck, all conference, Lily Tyre, Tyler, all conference honorable mention, Chater Rosas again. Varsity boys soccer, all section, Franz Vaca, all section honorable mention, John Dean, all league Franz Vaca, John Dean, Jason Santos, Robert Strielli, and Jason Mackus. So if I mispronounce any names, I'm sorry, I'm getting familiar with all the kids, and I will get those down by the end of the, the winter and spring season. That is our summary. I want to remember, I never want to save the date. We have June 9th. I want to announce our Tocco High School Varsity Club Athletic Awards Ceremony, where we're going to go into more detail about all three sports. And that'll be at Malino's at Lake Isle, and that's June 9th, and that'll be induction into our Hall of Fame. Ms. Goodman did mention something in education and sports linked, and I just want to say that we've done a lot already in the fall, and it's gone so fast. And having the student athletes, as not just athletes, but good people. We're going to resume our Tocco Cub Program with Cottles, starting to go down on Wednesdays. I've put out an email to the Cottles teachers that if they want to take part down on Wednesdays, whether we're going to go down and read to them, do some steam and assist with experiments, whatever Mr. Marash needs from our kids to be role models and go down and work with them, I think is outstanding. We had an unfortunate incident in our last soccer game, right behind Ms. Benke, where a student gave a sign at the end of the game that wasn't appropriate. We addressed it. And we had the first ever in Westchester County captains cultural council meeting, where LaFell Academy invited our three captains from that team over. I don't even apologize, but worked together and learned about each other's cultures. I think that's what needs to go on in the world and in our school district. It was an amazing experience. I drove with the three captains on the bus. Coach Sweeney drove because his wife, he was worried about having a baby, and I got to ride with the kids and just share in going over there and how it was going to work, did it work. We had an amazing lunch, learned a lot about their school and their culture, and they're going to come over for girls' basketball with their three captains, and they may become a model for Section One. I'm very excited about it. It was a nice experience. So I want to thank everyone for the opportunities. I am new, but getting to know each one of your children every day. Accessibility, my cellphone is always available, 914-652-0048. I talked to two parents on Sundays, and they were like, I can't believe you call me back on a Sunday. Well, I have a child too, and it's very important to them that I contact them, so we do that. So again, like the board with their hours, like the superintendent, please contact me. You don't have to go to anybody else. Anything with sports, come to me first. If I can't work it out, you're welcome to go to the next level, but just give my coaches and myself the opportunity first to work it out. I really thank you all. It's been a pleasure. Thank you. You were making some visits to the schools, and the kids were saying, you don't have any orange and black swag, as they call it. So here's for our next business. We went down to our practices, but this is for our future business for the kids.
Absolutely. We're getting tigers. Thank you, Mr. Tobin. Okay, we are going to move on now with the agenda, consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Peter, second. Laura, discussion. Any items there for discussion? All in favor? Move on to business of the board. One, policy reading. This is the second reading of amended policy 5420, Student Health Services. We discussed this at our last meeting. Lauren, this is regarding changes regarding religious exemptions.
Exactly.
Correct. Okay. This is posted on our website. If there's any comments on the policy, please let us know. Otherwise, it will go up for adoption at our next meeting as amended. Number two, approve a side letter of agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District hereby approves the side letter of agreement dated December 16, 2019, binding between the district and the Tocco Teachers Association, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Teraz, second. Peter, discussion. All in favor? Number three, approve a club. Resolved to create the following new student club for the 2019-20 school year with advisor stipend at the all-clubs class advisors amount as indicated in the TTA Extra Pay Scale Appendix F, High School Chess Club. Is there a motion? Teraz, second. Peter, discussion. All in favor? Number four, approve an intermunicipal agreement amendment. Resolved to authorize the superintendent of schools to sign the October 2019 intermunicipal agreement amendment to the town of Eastchester for a school resource officer and authorization payment thereof. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Peter, discussion. This is a, actually a reduction, correct?
Yes.
Do you want to just go over that?
The original budget was, in the first IMA, was 143,025 for the SRO for the district, and they revised that downward to 136,920.
136,920.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, we'll move on to personnel. Accept personnel recommendations. Resolved to accept personnel action items A through G as outlined below. Are there any comments on the personnel agenda? Motion? Peter, second. Cynthia? Discussion? All in favor? Number three, approve a club. Resolved to create the following new student club for the 2019-20 school year with advisor stipend at the all-clubs class advisors amount as indicated in the TTA Extra Pay Scale Appendix F, High School Chess Club. Is there a motion? Teraz, second. Peter, discussion. All in favor? Number four, approve an intermunicipal agreement amendment. Resolved to authorize the superintendent of schools to sign the October 2019 intermunicipal agreement amendment to the town of Eastchester for a school resource officer and authorization payment thereof. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Peter, discussion. This is a, actually a reduction, correct?
Yes.
Do you want to just go over that?
The original budget was, in the first IMA, was 143,025 for the SRO for the district, and they revised that downward to 136,920.
136,920.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, we'll move on to personnel. Accept personnel recommendations. Resolved to accept personnel action items A through G as outlined below. Are there any comments on the personnel agenda? Motion? Peter, second. Cynthia? Discussion? All in favor? Okay, we now are moving on to the second recognition of the audience. Anton, Adam, sorry.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
I just, I'm so wowed by Mr. Duchateau, and I'm wowed by our students. So thank you so much for sharing, because the teachers don't always hear everything. We see our one classroom, and we don't always see what all the kids do, and, and thanks for sharing. It was fantastic, and I love hearing their names, even if they're mispronounced, and knowing that, and even, and knowing that they're my kids too, and, and ever so proud of them.
I'll have to, yeah. Check with somebody. All right.
The Tocco, Jeannie Whalen, President, Tocco Teachers Association. The Tocco Teachers Association would like to take an opportunity to thank Carl Albano for his many years of service, so if he's out there watching. Carl is a dedicated and caring leader, and he will be missed by many of us, especially those who served with him for 17 years. We would also like to welcome Ms. Amy Goodman as our interim superintendent. We really look forward to a productive six months with you. It's not easy to step into this role, but I already see that your experience, your enthusiasm, your positivity means we'll be able to work cooperatively in order to ensure that our students have the best learning opportunities. So I am very pleased with how things have gone the last 10 days, so thank you. It is true that the high turnover rate at the administration level has created a level of uncertainty among the teachers and the staff. Because of this, we are glad to have participated in the first steps of the search for superintendent this past week. Eight teachers volunteered their time, met with Dr. Coles. It was a very productive hour. No one breathed, we were talking so much, but he listened very well and heard everything we had to say, and you could tell how much the teachers care about the future of the district by all the things they shared, and their deep knowledge of the district is valuable to Dr. Coles. So we appreciate being part of that, and we look forward to continuing to have a voice as the process continues and as we select candidates and people to interview, et cetera. We agree with Ms. Ziegers. We thank her for her comments on the importance of an open, transparent process, and how key that is to ensuring full support for new leadership, because, so that we can all work together. In the meantime, the Tocco teachers, like Mr. Duchateau said, continue to do what we always, always do. We work to uphold the high standards, to support our students, to follow through on the strategic plan, and to maintain the continuity throughout the schools. And I hope the entire board, and I believe you all do, recognize the value that the teachers have, especially in this time of transition, and that we will continue, the way we did last week, to work toward a fair settlement on a new contract. The stability would allow us to move forward and focus on what matters most, educating the children of Tocco. So thank you very much, and for your time as well.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. We have a list. Do you want to call out the names? Is that it?
Mr. Bagetti?
Scott Bogetti. Teraz, thank you for bringing up the, I guess, going to seven board members. So we have 211 signatures. The goal was 200, so we kind of went past it. So I would, hopefully the board will consider going to a vote to get to seven board members if possible, bring it to the community, let them decide whether or not we should go this route. So if that's something you guys can consider, I would appreciate it. I think the public, you know, we got 200 votes, so hopefully that's, you know, shows a lot of interest. I, I guess the biggest question, the turmoil in the superintendent, and welcome the board, by the way. by the way. Why did Carl leave? If he was, I think everybody wants to know that answer, right? If he was, like, he was supposed to stay here until June of next year, of '20. So why did he leave? Is there an answer? I mean, I think we kind of, I don't know if we deserve it as a community, but is there an answer for that?
We had an agree, mutually agreed upon agreement. It was for both parties mutually agreed on that it was in the best interest at this time.
It just sounds like we're throwing money out, like, as a district. You know, I have Carl's exit agreement here and, you know, we gave him $133,000 severance. You know, we had to give a raise to the new interim superintendent. We have to hire a new special ed director. So was that necessary to give all that extra money for a six-month position?
It was, yes. In our, in our agreement, yes, as a board, that's, yes, is the answer.
Is there an answer? But what's, like, just saying yes, I mean, I would like an answer, just maybe the community does too, like, what was the reason behind it? That's all. I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just asking for a reason.
Listen, I understand the question, but you, it's difficult because this is personnel, personnel issues. We just can't really talk about it. We'd love to, we just can't.
Yeah, Pete, I think the answer to that is we're not allowed to talk about personnel issues.
All I can say as individual members is that, you know, we, I felt that it was in the best interest of the district to do this deal. That's all I can really say about it. I wish I could say more, but that's just.
So, all right, so it was $133,000 across, a raise, and then a new money for a new special ed director at a daily rate, so.
Well, it's a part-time position, right?
Okay, so the special education director is only working three days a week.
Okay.
So I'm helping out the other two days a week with that.
I know, Michelle, you brought up, you brought up the comptroller investigation that's been going on. So in Carl's exit agreement, so I just wanted the community to know that I didn't start the comptroller investigation. It strictly states here that Carl started this in January through March of 2019. So before my time of coming up here in November, this is something that Carl addressed.
Excuse me, it's your three-minute mark. Goodbye.
I could just say, you know, all I could say is, and you have the agreement, so you've read the agreement and you know that the board cannot comment on the agreement, unfortunately. No, that's, no, I just, I just want you to understand that the board can't comment on the agreement, which you know because you have it. Okay? Anybody else?
But you also addressed the current state of that investigation.
Of the audit, yes. We have an answer from our attorney's office on it.
But that's, just to, that's your attorney, and I'm just, I'm not arguing.
No, no, no. Our attorney's office was contacted by the state.
My understanding is the lawyers for the state have not decided yet whether.
Well, Scott, Scott, you can't address from there, so you could come, okay.
Did you want to know if it's yes or no?
Yeah.
I know you said the lawyers, your lawyers.
Our lawyer has been notified.
Your lawyers keen and being agreed. The towns attorneys agreed that nothing was done wrong.
The town, no, the town's attorney, nothing to do with the audit.
I thought you said the towns attorney. Okay, so whatever.
Our school's attorney has been notified by the state.
My understanding is that the New York State Comptroller's Office, the lawyers for the state, not the person that came in here and interviewed all the board members and former board members. The lawyers for the state are still reviewing whether or not to do a full audit.
That's not correct. And I'm not sure where you're getting your information from, but that's not to our knowledge.
And I think, I think, so if you Google comptroller and Takahoe and just sort of research what a comptroller, I mean, it is, it's a body that comes in and they do this throughout.
No, I know, I know.
They're, they come in and they look financially at districts. They do it all the time.
Right.
Obviously, if there's a complaint, they'll do it. But here's the thing, it's not local and it's not, it's a, comptroller is a governing body that comes in. So I think if people want to understand what that is, it might be helpful to just Google comptroller and Takahoe.
No, no, I know what comptroller means. I know that, but the person that came in and interviewed, I guess, you, Ms. Banky, you, Ms. Tate, you, Mr. Lucio, and the former board members, he really just interviewed about the IMA.
How would you know that he, is that public information?
I found out that someone came in and interviewed.
So you called Tom Stenath's office and asked him if he interviewed.
I called the state.
Okay. You called the state?
Yeah, sure.
I don't think that they can discuss that. Okay. Let's, well, let's move on. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mealy?
I'm Susan Mealy. I live in Chester Heights. I got to manage these three minutes. Thank you all for your service. I agree 100%. We need to expect and demand civility at all times. You guys are volunteers and you're acting on behalf of our community. And that is a tough job because you know the people that you're making decisions on behalf of. So thank you again for what you're doing. I just want to comment on two things. One is my daughter appeared on that screen in the strings program. And like Ms. Goodman, I could be brought to tears watching. I'm so proud. And I just want to say that she is able to accomplish what she did solely by taking violin lessons in the school's strings program. Everything she did, she learned from Ms. Shentov at Cottle and from Mr. Duchateau in the middle school and high school. And when I watch her, I'm, you know, I'm dazzled. I can't believe this is real. This is amazing. How many people pay for private school tuition to get perks like this? And here we have it in our small district. And to have a caliber of teacher like Mr. Duchateau, Ms. Shentov, it's just phenomenal. And I really want to urge everybody to continue to support the arts. I'm not a data-driven parent. I'm driven by individuals, by emotions, and I look at what the arts bring to the kids. And it brings them self-esteem, it brings them respect, dignity. I mean, just look at the way they conduct themselves, not just how they play their instrument, but it really gives them something to be proud of. And I'm so grateful for that and would like to see more of it. I also just want to address the petition going around, not to say yea or nay in favor of a seven-person board, but just to encourage everybody to be thoughtful when considering a petition, a survey, whatever. I learned a really good lesson when my daughter was in kindergarten. A survey came home, a piece of paper, "Do you support the addition of Italian language for first graders starting next year, yes or no?" And I thought, "Great, that sounds good. More stuff? Okay, great." And I sent it back with yes. And then I talked to another parent who's an educator in another district and she said, "I can't believe they sent home that survey that was so irresponsible. How can you evaluate a situation with just a one-sentence question, no explanation? What is this instead of? Is the school day going to be lengthened? No. So what's this instead of? Is it instead of recess? Is it instead of math? Is it instead of ELA? What is it instead of?" And I really learned so much from that. And I've thought about every topic for debate that way since. Not to just look at it at face value, because anything could sound great when you pose the question, but you have to think, what are the implications? What does it really mean? And do the homework and have a debate, have a discourse, come to the forums, all of that. And I just want to encourage everybody to get involved in that way before jumping on any particular bandwagon, one way or the other. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Ms. Connolly?
Hi, Amy Connolly, Siouxsie Boulevard. I'm not one for public speaking, so I'm nervous. So I just want to thank the superintendent and the board and Charles for the strings presentation. You know, it's amazing that you support this program. And I'm going to repeat what other people said, but I think it's worth repeating. In a time when arts budgets are shrinking, Takahoe's support for this is amazing and it's appreciated by many. My oldest son started in the program in second grade with Ms. Shentov. He's in ninth grade now. My sixth grader and third grader are also in the strings program. This is, Susan said it, this program differentiates this district and I think there's so much to celebrate about this program and many other things that we do. I see a lot of parents here whose kids are in the music program, in all of our music programs throughout, throughout the schools. And I speak for all of us, I think, when I say how much we appreciate your, the board's support and the administration's support. On a separate note, I want to thank the board for responding to the letter that I sent last week regarding my concerns about the turnover in the district. You know, and I just ask again that you involve the community in the search and in the decision-making process. It's not been as transparent, it's not been as transparent or forward-thinking as many in the community feel it should be, especially given the time that we, that we've had time to plan. I was at the meeting with Dr. Coles on Friday and this was a consistent message from the people who were there. I respectfully ask that you respond to our requests and that you take them to heart. I think everyone who's here loves this district and many things about it. It's not perfect. And we appreciate what our teachers do, but we're here because we care and, you know, we do, we really ask that you listen and that some things change with the process so that we can have a better, you know, have it be better for, for everybody, especially our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Tracy Devitt?
Tracy Devitt, 65 Archer Drive. I'm just calling, I'm calling. I'm up here. I wasn't planning, I signed just in case I wanted to make a statement, but I'm just going to make it brief. I love the teachers in this district so much. I think they do an amazing job. And with everything that we have been going on through for, to be honest with, for years, I think, I think they have always acted in a way to ensure that our students were doing the very best. And, you know, I think it's great that we're all coming together, we're being very open. I love the principal's coffee. I know I had emailed the board to say it went really well as far as good feedback, confidence in, you know, how things are moving forward. So I appreciate that. And I'm just looking forward to more of that. I think the superintendent's forum was great. I think that the committees, as, I can already hear the feedback coming back, so I think that's great, you know, what's already been gained. So I'm optimistic. I am genuinely optimistic. I think, you know, we're moving in the right direction. It's a great district. It's always been a good, great district. I think it can be better. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy.
Ms. Gerald? Mrs. Martino, before and after. Do you want to switch spots? You want to switch spots?
I'd like to address the agreements between Mr. Albano and the board and Ms. Goodman and the board. I think in full disclosure, I think the community should know that Mr. Albano is being paid his full salary and benefits until June 30th, in addition to the severance of $133,655, which will bring his compensation for this year to $388,655. In addition, Ms. Goodman's agreement is $1,050 a day, which will come out to about $250,000. 20 days paid leave, of which at the end of June, if not used, she can cash in 10 days, so that's a potential of another $10,500. Under section three, page three, under compensation, Ms. Goodman, it says, "Is, shall not be entitled to any other fringe benefits, including health." On page four, she's receiving a $3,750 buyout for declining the health. And I'm curious, how you could decline something you're not entitled to? Does not make sense. But that's another $3,750 that's coming into the salary. When I add it all up, the $255,000 a year superintendent's job is now costing this community $650,000. And I ask this board, "You really couldn't wait six months? That is not, not good. That is not financial smarts, not in any way." I don't even, I think enough people have gone into the turnover in this district. We have gone through, since 2011, we are on our third interim superintendent and we've had two superintendents. We've gotten an athletic director who left after two years, a special ed director who left after 11 months, who's now being filled, who's filled by an interim, who's now being filled by an interim part-timer. District treasurer left. We've been through six middle school principals, three assistant principals, well, two, we have one, thank God he's staying. Ms. Lou is retiring. And my question is, are you vested in our pension system now, Ms. Lou?
I'm sorry?
Are you vested? Have you had your 10 years, you're vested for the pension? You're not? You'll be vested in June?
No.
No, you won't be vested in pension? Okay. Because we are paying Dr. Nutzey's pension, who was in the district for three years, and her pension is $146,000 a year. So these are things people have to know. These are things the taxpayers have to know and try and figure out, is this board truly being prudent with the money that the taxpayers are paying? And the big question, and I think a lot of people want to know, "You couldn't wait six months?" There's no reason, no reason whatsoever.
Thank you.
Hello, Lori Gerald, 15 Wallace Street. Good evening, everyone. I just want to say one thing. I normally try to be very, very positive and I'm going to do that again today. The first thing that I want to say, I had no idea I was even going to say this. Normally, when I come to these meetings, there's not this many people here. There isn't. And many times I've been at these, these meetings and even Robert, I've even heard Robert say, "You know, parents don't come out. They don't come. No one's here at the meetings." And then the day that the parents come out, you put up a sign-up sheet, you want to know what we're talking about ahead of time, you want to give a three-minute limit. And I think that's unfair for most of us sitting in this room. I think that's not a positive tone. It really isn't. And I think that that needs to be reconsidered. So if there is a person who's out of control a bit, then you deal with that person. The shoe fits, wear it. But for all these wonderful people out here who love this community, that, I think, is unacceptable. Number two, you want me to, you made me want to play the viola again with that outfit. That was like, I don't want to go back there. To Ms. Martino's address, I think my concern there with the amount of money that's going out as a taxpayer, when we get people into positions who, for whatever reason, can't handle the position, and then they have to, you know, you got to hire, they need an assistant and that assistant needs an assistant and we need about four or five interims and that sort of thing. What happens with that is all of the money that's expended ends up not being able to go to our students. And that's what we're here for. And to that point, the fifth grade, I found out they were to read three novels this year. They moved to a departmentalized situation. And having been a former teacher, a lover of learning, a lover of literature circles, the fact that they do not have those novels is a disgrace to me because those novels should have been here over the summer so that proper planning could be, you know, done so that they could have, they could have been through a novel by now and on a second. So now, by the time they get it, there's this race through such rich, beautiful language that comes from literature. And so with that, I say, we do have to be better at being fiscally responsible. We need to be thinking about getting people who are going to come here and stay. That means that that requires us as a community to maybe form advisory committees that are encompassing of different facets within our community, different families, different cliques, whatever you want to call them, so that everybody has a stake. And I'm not saying to form an advisory committee because what has happened, I know because I've been on many of them, they're just reforming fashion. Okay, but I'm going to go on past three minutes. They've been performing fashion, they haven't been taken seriously. So if we're going to do those advisory committees so that we can hire people who should be here and really put our kids first and bridge gaps that need to happen, that requires everybody's call collaboration so that our students can have the books that they need, the materials that they need, that the teachers should have the professional development that they need and the support. And I think we can do better. And I think we can do better.
Agreed. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Gerald.
Allison Halloran?
Hi, Allison Halloran, 115 Middleton Place. I wasn't too sure what I was going to speak about tonight, but we've hit on a lot of different things. Thank you, Ms. Martino, for bringing to our attention how much we are paying Mr. Albano for his time and Ms. Goodman. I do have to say, I was originally going to get up here and talk about how we need to be more positive, how we have great things going on in this district that we are not highlighting anymore, but we did a fantastic job of that tonight, showing how great this district is and what our kids are doing. And so much of that is getting lost and all the negativity. And one reason why all of this great stuff is happening is because of our teachers. And we are forgetting about them. And by paying all this money out for our superintendent who could have stayed six more months and not giving our teachers and our support staff a contract is really almost disgraceful. They are amazing, many of them in this room tonight. They do amazing things. I mean, to walk into a classroom on back-to-school night and for a teacher to say to me, "Look, your daughter who graduated four years ago," I still have her picture up here. And for another one to see me out at a volleyball thing and talk to me about how wonderful my son is for an hour when I was actually embarrassed and like, "We don't have to talk about this," but they wanted to? I mean, that's amazing. You don't get that everywhere. And we've just got to start being more positive and looking at what our teachers are, are doing for our kids. You know, growing up, I don't remember who was on the school board, I don't remember who the superintendent was, but I do remember every one of my teachers and their principals. And that's who's affecting our children. And we really have got to start thinking about the community and the school district as a whole. Ms. Goodman, welcome to coming with us. I appreciate everything you did at tonight's meeting, highlighting all of the great stuff. One thing I do want to mention really quick is that, you talked about your open-door policy, and I love that, I welcome it. But when you look at resolving policy conflicts with disgruntled parents, please be mindful of how that affects everybody involved. And don't just make policy change on case-by-case basis as what's been done. Make policy change that is good for the future and how that affects the teachers, the building administrator, the student, and the students who were not negatively impacted by the policy. Because often when we, when we change policies on case-by-case basis, we give the students who did what they were supposed to do the idea that that was worthless. I've had situations where my son is literally telling my daughter, "Don't even bother with that, because the parents will complain and, and other kids will just get it." And we can't have that. We've got to have policies that we change that will make everybody's future here in the district work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Seifer, 18 Stevens Avenue. So I did come tonight with, I thought I was going to say some different things, but I think we're hearing from the community tonight. Everyone knows how I feel. I've always felt it was important that people come out and speak their mind. So I do think it's important, and I agree, telling people right out of the gate that they can't speak probably wasn't a great approach, and I think it makes, it comes across defensive. I sat in all your seats, not for as long as everybody. It's very difficult. The questions are very hard. But I think what I want to see, and I think what this community wants to see, is a little more transparency, clarity, a plan, and not, "We can't speak about it because we can't." I get it, there are a lot of things we can't speak about. But as you guys are aware, who are sitting, the members that I was with, we worked on a handful of things that I haven't heard anything about. The strategic plan, "How's it going? Where are we?" The capital project. I was down at Cottle a couple of nights. I didn't see anyone working. It's behind. I think we all know it's behind. It's not secure. You could work up to the second floor by just going through the gate. Today, I don't know what that incident was, but I was by there this morning, and the street wasn't closed because the construction crew was moving their crane up and down the street. Is that why the barrier wasn't there? And then who's watching? So I don't, I might want to complain, because it's difficult, and I get it, but I am concerned that we lost a superintendent, we have an interim, another interim that's been spoken about over and over. Everyone knows how I feel about that. It's hard to have a plan when we constantly change our leadership and we start over. It's always the reset button. It's always the reset button with new ideas. So what I would like to see from this board is a plan on how we're going to continue to move all the things we've been working on forward. I've been kind of staying away, but after what happened last week, I was amazed. And in fairness, I thought that could have been handled much better. Mr. Albano deserved better than that. Seventeen years of service in the middle of all the things he was working on and is aware of, and we didn't want to keep him here to transition a new superintendent and share his knowledge? I don't understand that. So I would like an explanation. I know I'm not going to get it. I would like one, because it doesn't make a lot of sense that seventeen years of experience, we wouldn't want to tap into that for whoever's going to be his replacement. So all I ask is that going forward, maybe there's more forums, maybe there's advisory committees. I think those are great ideas, to get more involvement from this community. It's a small community. You know what that petition's about? I think that petition's about more discussion, because we don't have enough of it. We talked about it when I sat up there with you. We need to talk more and not say, "I can't answer that." Tonight's a good example. Many points were made, and I think there was only two comments after the points. That's the issue. We need to communicate. Yes, there's limits to what we can and can't say, but as a community and as taxpayers, we want to hear what the plan is. And by the way, the teachers, I'm not concerned. People ask me, "What do you think with all the instability?" The teachers will do their job, they're professionals. Mr. De Faiso, Du Chateau, sorry, tonight was fantastic. Mr. Tobin, great. That's what our school's about, and that's what we can deliver all the time. So I thank you for bringing those presentations tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I again want to reiterate my disappointment in this limiting of the public voice at a moment in which the community's confidence in the board has been shaken. The response is to shut people up, essentially, or that is at least the feeling. I'm sure that may not have been your intention, but it is the feeling. I want to also just go through one quick thing. I'm aware of the IMA. You briefly discussed the fact that the IMA is, you know, it's on agreement, it's been reviewed. We understand that. However, you can understand why I concern some of us. I don't actually have an axe to grind. It doesn't affect me at all. But you just had a guy you made the agreement with come in here, talk to an employee of his, call a member of the public an idiot. This is the superintendent of, of our neighboring town. He used the word idiot on the record.
How would you know that?
I'm sorry?
How would you know that?
Because I watched.
Okay, well, we're not going to have that. We're not going to have that.
On the, on the YouTube video.
We're not going to have that.
Excuse me?
Okay, okay, okay. Okay. We're not going to have this. We're not going to have this. Okay.
Knock that off.
Okay.
Is Braden people? I'm not saying that either. It sure sounds like it, buddy.
Okay, you know what? I just, we're not going to have this, okay?
I'm happy to defer my question.
Okay.
But I, I did not appreciate the tone of his comments regarding a member of the public. That was simply my point. I'm making no aspersions on the individual. However, I felt it was unprofessional and unbecoming.
That is your opinion.
Again, we talked, we talked about the tone of the discussion.
You have the right to have an opinion.
That's right. That's why I'm up here. It's my opinion, and I'm allowed to have that.
That's fine. Then this is your opportunity to make the comment for it.
Thank you.
It's done.
And that was my comment.
That's okay.
And lastly, I just want to do, walk through what we talked at the superintendent meeting on Friday. Again, the turnout was somewhat disappointing. There was only, again, fifteen, eighteen people there, and by the middle of it, half were gone. There did seem to be general concerns of administrative bloat, and I think the general feeling among the discussion there was there are concerns about kind of the influences going on in the school right now, that there seems to be concerns about stability, there's concerns about this kind of chaotic feeling, the feeling of kind of what the hell's going on? We keep losing people. And for those of us that aren't super-involved in the school sometimes, it just feels a bit confusing from the outside, where you think, "I don't know what's going on, but I just see people leaving and more people leaving, and people are yelling at meetings," and it's, it's very disconcerting. And it feels like the superintendent has got to be someone who's going to be able to resist all that and be able to be a strong voice and a strong advocate for our kids and be able to resist, you know, nepotism and kind of endemic corruption in certain positions and also parents who sometimes try to get preferential treatment for their children. And I hope that our next superintendent is able to kind of resist these forces and be an advocate for what matters the most, which is the kids that he's in charge, he or she is in charge of. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment, actually, to speak about why we have this, we're now abiding by a policy that really has always been there. And the most important job of the Board of Education, something that when we took our oath and we go to these workshops is drilled, is to find a superintendent. And I believe that Tuckahoe deserves a superintendent that would be absolutely the best, that any other district would want. And we don't attract talent like that when we're running a circus in our business meetings. And these are business meetings. And I think it's unfortunate that the behavior of a minority, and I always say it's a loud minority, can dictate how we have to do things going forward. And I, I will say that I was in support of limiting talk only because I want to attract the very best people into this district. I was a graduate of, in, of Tuckahoe in 1992 when it was a lot smaller. My father sat on the school board for nine years, so I was around a lot of talk at the kitchen table about the school. And, you know, the names have changed, some of the scenarios haven't. And when I was coming onto the board, my main goal was to raise the bar. And when I said raise the bar, the academic bar, how we behave as people, the example we're setting, and what we're doing to make our students better people. And I understand how it looks to the outside and me of all people, it kills me not to say things. And Mr. Seifer and I sat on a board for seven years and tasked, he could tell you, "I'm a talker." But in the effort to protect our district, to protect our finances and to protect our kids, some, we've had to make some hard decisions. And where you may not understand it right this second, I think time will bring clarity. And maybe you won't agree, but I hope that, you know, the majority will respect and understand what motivated us. We want the best for these kids. We want to attract people who are professionals, who have integrity, who are educators, and they don't want to see a circus. I wish that, I wish we had this turnout every time. You know, like, like Ms. Gerald said, there's usually three people here. It was her and I at one point, and, and Antoinette Martino, there wasn't a lot going on. So I'm happy and I hope that today starts a trend and we're turning a page and everybody's paying attention and tuned in, because that's what we need.
I'd like to say something, too, because of the three-minute rule and a few other things. Number one, the three-minute rule is part of your board policy. Having children in other districts and worked in about five, six other districts, and that, we just did a survey of which districts have the three-minute survey, and most of them do. So it's not unusual. Your town board has a, a certain amount of minutes survey also, I'm, I'm sorry, speakers. And I believe that it does promote decorum. And I do believe that most of the people were very concise and thoughtful in their comments and really got at a lot of what they wanted to say, and those comments were very helpful and interesting. Another thing that we are going to do on our board retreat is to come up with some committees, as some of you have recommended, so that we can hear voices and have discussions in other forums that can help us make better decisions about your students and your children. I do want to say that I do believe that Tuckahoe is a special little gem. It's a wonderful community. I have met your kids. You have fabulous children. And I, and we do have wonderful teachers. We really do. And they have held this district up. They really have. And I hope that tomorrow is a very fruitful discussion, because we really do want to come to terms on our agreements with teachers. And, you know, I know I'm an interim. I just want you to know that I will put every effort into this district to attract the best people that, that we can find. And we've already put ads out for assistant superintendent for business and for director of special education, and those end in January, because I want us to have a jumpstart on the best people. I think I am a good person for this position, because I know a lot of people that I can tap on the shoulders and get the people that are worthy of working with your children. And I think that's the most important thing that we can do as a board, that I can do as a superintendent. And just know my door is open, so it's not just when I have a coffee. Please feel free to call me. There is a way to go. As those of you who are teachers, first go to the teacher, then go to the principal, assistant principal or principal, and then come to me. I don't want to solve all the problems up here, because I believe the people in the schools can solve them best, but I want to be a part of the process. And because we are ending at the end of the year and because of what happened at Cottle today, I think we all have to be extremely thankful that nothing happened and look at our children and kiss them goodnight and realize that everything seems very big, but in the end, when we go home and our children are okay and our families are okay, we have a lot to be thankful for as we go into the new year. And I wish you all a happy holiday, a good New Year's, and that we do better in 2020. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we will not be adjourning, because we will be going back into executive session. I do sincerely want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and showing your interest in participating, and please continue to do so in the new year. Thank you.
Oh! Wait, come on. I need you. Can everybody just wait a second?
Can everybody, everyone gets just sit for one more second, please?
I am not easily dismissed.
Hold on, hold on.
I, I have good news. First place, I'm glad to be back. I have not been involved. I was at that dreaded place where you pay taxes.
Can you give your name, please, for everyone?
Oh, my name is Lovely Phillips, and I live on High Street in Tuckahoe, South High Street. I was at that dreaded place where you pay taxes and happened to see the chair of the board, who's been a friend for years. And I promised her that I would come back, and I'm glad to be here. I was, I, I want to be involved. I was a classroom teacher, then a teacher trainer, and then a trainer of trainers with eighty sites all over the United States and internationally. So I want to, I'm retired now, and I want to bring that expertise back to Tuckahoe. One tidbit, Main Street School in Tuckahoe was the first integrated elementary school in Westchester County. That's, that's, we started out, we started out in unity, and we have to use that to, and build on that. We, we need, I believe there's strength in diversity. I really believe that. And we're going to utilize that. We have, we have that asset in, in our hands. Let's not, you know, flitter it away. And I, and with the best news, it happens to be this young man is my grandson, but he's also a graduate of Tuckahoe High School. And if you saw CBS Sunday Morning yesterday, Max Pearce was on for the Globetrotters, and he mentioned that he's a graduate of Tuckahoe High School. And, and I felt so good. And he is now, he started out last year as a player. He is now a media representative for the Globetrotters all over the, the country, all over the world. And his last feat was the vessel, the building in New York. He went from the top deck all the way down and shot baskets from that spot. They, and he doesn't, teachers, you know, I was in the union. I don't know, I think he knows a lot about labor thing. They, they booked him for two days to do this. He did it in an hour and a half. All I could see was that money go floating out of there. But yay, Tuckahoe, good for all of us. Let's stick together.
Good night. Thank you. Thank you.
[applause]
Good evening. Robert Seifer, 18 Stevens Avenue. So I did come tonight with, with, I thought I was going to say some different things, but I think we're hearing from the community tonight. Everyone knows how I feel. I've always felt it was important that people come out and speak their mind. So I do think it's important, and I agree, telling people right out of the gate that they can't speak probably wasn't a great approach, and I think it makes, it comes across defensive. I sat in all your seats, not for as long as everybody. It's very difficult.